Okay, it looks like all the council members are here. Holly, let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, so we'll call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, October 13th of 2020. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting, and the first order of business would be the roll call. Holly?
Boersma.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here from Colorado.
Mieski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
All right, there are 11 Alders present.
All right, thank you, Holly. That takes us to communications and presentations. Are there any communications from council members this evening?
Actually, go ahead.
I'd like to mention that yesterday was Indigenous Peoples' Day as resolved by the council a few weeks ago, and acknowledge that we are on ceded Ho-Chunk land.
And are there other communications?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to reflect too. Ben, you stole my thoughts. With respect to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I think it's a great new new, I don't say celebration, but a good recognition on the second Monday of October from here on out. So thank you, everybody who supported that. Do you want me to go over the council goals update right now too, Mayor?
Yeah, we'll just finish up with communications and then we'll lead into that. Are there any other communications? I had a couple. The first one is I want to acknowledge that October 15th is White King Safety Day, and that's been celebrated, I believe, since 1964. So I was asked to do that. And then also, we received an application request for outdoor liquor sales down in the Main Street in the business district today. So we're wondering if we should have a special meeting, or if council members would be available to do that, and maybe we can follow up on that. We're thinking either Thursday before Public Works, or sometime maybe next week before the committee of the whole, so we can get approval on that, or disapproval, whichever way the council goes, so we can get back to the business owner.
So Mayor, that came in. When did that come in?
Holly?
Around 3 o'clock today.
And has everybody looked at it to?
Staff has reviewed it, and zoning is fine with it. I have my piece for the liquor part, but it does need council approval.
Can we amend the agenda for this evening to include it?
No.
Oh.
No, we have to have 24-hour notice.
Well, I would suggest, just before Public Works, we've got a number of people, I think three of us are going to that one, and that gives us some time to look at it as well. That's this next Thursday.
This coming Thursday, like in a day or two?
Yeah, we'd have to post it tomorrow, but we wanted to make sure that we could get a quorum before we did that. And so we're looking at availability.
Can we look at it straw poll tonight as to whether people are gonna come?
That's what he's trying to do. I could do it.
That's fine. Just let me know a specific time. I'll still, I'll be at work, Ben.
Lisa, I can be there.
Okay, please, I'll send out an email with the agenda, so please make sure you're checking your email. I don't think it would take us more than 15 minutes, so I can, it'll either be 5:30 or 5:45.
I would suggest 5:45 would be better for me.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So we'll send that out. That'll lead us to the any other communication before we get into the council goals. Hearing none, the floor is yours, President Hirsch.
Thank you. Thank you all the council members that submitted council goals for 2020. What we have in the packet is that CACP put your goals together and for the right committee, and we sent it off to the leadership team, and so that's what you're seeing in the different color reds are their comments on each of those goals. Then I believe that we're going to relook, I mean, some of the people haven't, leadership hasn't gotten back to with all of them yet, but we're hoping by the next CACP meeting, we'll have that all filled out, and then we'll decide kind of whittle it down a little bit, get rid of some of the redundancy, and then send it off to the respective committees to to decide what they want to tackle this year, and kind of make a priority list, and report back to us. Go through the council goals. I think you should read them on your own time. I don't want to take up people's time reading what are the leadership team has said, but as you read through the comments from the leadership team, if you have anything else that you would like to add, or any other further regarding yours or somebody else's goals, send them to me, and we can put it in with the CACP next agenda to discuss those. So again, thank you, everybody, for submitting your goals, and I look forward to ticking off some of these as we go forward through the rest of this year. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, President Hirsch. That takes us to public comment period. I don't believe anybody was signed up to speak tonight. So we'll go to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. I heard a motion from Jensen. Was there a second?
Yeah, good.
Second by Boersma. Would anybody like anything in the consent agenda acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 And were there anybody opposed? The consent agenda carries. Next item is ordinance 19 of 2020, and this one is coming for a second reading from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance 19 of 2020, and ordinance amending the zoning classification at 1114 and 1115 Abel Court in the city of Stoughton, and I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Mieski, and Alder Person Caravelo, you want to walk us through this for the second time?
As we discussed at last regular council meeting, this is changing the zoning classification from single-family residential to two-family residential purpose being essentially so that to accommodate Habitat for Humanity, who would like to build some duplexes on these lots.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Director Scheel?
Nope, I think we captured it well at the last meeting, but it's certainly available for questions.
And I believe there's some folks on here from Habitat as well. If anybody have any questions? Hearing no questions, all in favor of the ordinance, say aye.
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 And any opposed? And that motion is approved. And the next one also comes from the Planning Commission. This is ordinance 20. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, this is ordinance 20 of 2020, and this is amending the zoning code sections 78-707 and 78-704 of the Stoughton Municipal Code, and I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Haley. Alder Person Caravelo?
Actually, there's, before I I just noticed, looking at this, it says second reading October 9th, 2020, which actually, second reading should say October 13th, 2020. Very minor detail on there, but as discussed at last regular council meeting, this is essentially just making our current wording easier to work with and comply to in regards to, and I know that Brett liked this term that Rodney used, essentially sort of to control what Rodney described as fugitive light.
Still my favorite.
And I can now let Rodney expound on that if someone would, if anyone would like.
It doesn't change the standards for the light that leaves the site. That standard's still in place, so this is still protective of that. But what it does is it takes out the maximum average lighting levels within the site, which are much more difficult to calculate and/or monitor. So this does really still continue to restrict the property light standard that's in place in the existing ordinance, but the averages are now removed as part of the requirement.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry. I think what I like to do is just finish up the business and then come to the appointments at the end, if that's okay with everyone.
Sure.
Sure.
Doesn't matter.
Having said that, that would take us to Resolution 156 of 2020, which would come from Finance Committee.
All right, R. 156, 2020, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into a purchase agreement and easement for 154 West Main Street. So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, we did this one way back in June and approved this, recommended this up to council. This is part of, it's the city taking control of purchasing this alleyway that is behind the building at 154 West Main. The property owner had done some investment in there, and this is ultimately to make them whole with their investment in that, so that that maintains alley as a public right of way. Did I hack that up terribly, Jamin or Rodney? I can add to it. The property owner is also on the line with it. There's an odd situation, and their basement extended under this public, publicly traveled corridor that we have used as an alley for, I'll say, 100 years. That alley had a ceiling that deteriorated, and therefore, the property owner took it upon themselves and worked with us to try to reinforce that. Actually, they filled the entire basement and prepared it for the pavement surface to be replaced over top of it. So it's now been fortified by them, and the asphalt has been put back on top and reopened for the public use again. The license in the purchase agreement allows the city and the public to continue to utilize that as a public corridor across this piece of property. City Attorney Dregney helped to draft the materials for consideration tonight. Carol is included in the meeting tonight, and she's reviewed the documents, as in, is also in support of the documents. This funding is part of the TIF expenditure that still was allowed in the TIF District as part of our downtown improvement funding budget. We anticipated this expenditure, and therefore, it's recommended for your adoption.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
For the benefit of the city residents, could we just go through the basics of the agreement, the price and all that?
Ultimately, it grants us rights to utilize the property. Their basement is still underneath it, but it allows the public the utilization rights to that area. $31,000 is the cost that was necessary to make those improvements, that space, and that's the amount that's included in agreement.
And are there any repercussions, Rodney? If the if what was done fails, or if there's a problem with the construction of it, or would that be our liability then, I would assume?
Well, the city hasn't taken ownership of it. We've taken rights to travel it, so it still remains their property. You know, certainly, they use their care and their contractors, and we are involved in observing the methods that they use to fortify the interior doors and the like. So we're comfortable with the construction was done there. The property owner feels comfortable with the construction that was done there. We're not anticipating failure at any point in the near future related to this work.
And I'm just, I'm just thinking of the issue of insurance, if that's insured by the property owner.
It still remains, as we understand it, part of their particular parcel, and therefore insured as such.
Thank you.
So, just so I understand, prior to this damage being discovered, this was kind of unofficial, public right of way?
Yeah, I guess in some, some views, it was used as a public corridor. Certainly, garbage trucks, our maintenance crews and the like traverse this alley. Delivery trucks for adjacent property owners also utilize this route. But it was a void because it was a basement with a ceiling that had deteriorated and was unpassable, and actually, we had to close it because of safety concerns for a period of time.
I'm wondering about the status of similar alley portions of neighboring properties.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any that have the similarities to this. I'm not aware of any that actually have basements underneath the travelway in any any location remaining in their alleys downtown. We did have a number of them out front of properties that were filled. Many of them are filled as part of the Main Street work in the past. So this is an anomaly, I think, because it's the only one I'm aware of under Ethan Alley.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next item is R. 157 of 2020, and this comes from Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you. Got to make sure I was on. Yes, Resolution 157, 2020, approving the operating license for Robert Capri. Public Safety recommended denial, but as you know, this has to come as a positive, can't be a negative, so my motion would be to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, Alder Person Jensen, you want to explain that?
Yeah, so just, just to clarify that a little bit, if we came through with a negative, this is for the new people, the ones that haven't done this before. If it came through as a negative, it would be confusing as to how you would vote. Do you vote yes to vote no, or do you vote no to vote yes? And so, to simplify things and make it to make it easy, we simply bring everything forward as, as in the positive for approval, and then it can be denied with a no vote. And this is something, the person was not there, the chief did not recommend that this person be given a license, did not meet qualifications, so the committee denied, recommended denial.
Okay, any questions or clarifications needed from Alders? All right, so all approval, all in, all looking to approve the motion, say aye. And all opposed to the motion, say no?
No.
No.
All right, so that motion does fail. Thank you. And the next item also is coming from Public Safety for a first reading. On the ordinances, we always do two readings. The first reading is to introduce it, and then that way, if there's any questions or changes that need to be made, either staff or the committee can update those changes and bring it back for action at the next city council meeting. Well, this one is up for its first reading. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, honor. This is ordinance 21 of 2020, amending chapter 70-183 of the city of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to no parking 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on school days in the north side of the 1900 block of Jackson Street. And this is the first reading.
Now, you do have the option, if you'd like to waive the rules, so you could take action tonight. If you did, that would require a motion and a two-thirds passing vote.
Yeah, I will so, I will so move that, that we do it tonight.
Okay, there's a motion to waive the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, take your pick, Holly. All in favor of waiving the rules, say aye.
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 And anybody opposed to waiving the rules? All right, so that motion carries, so now we can take action on this, and I believe this is in front of the daycare, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so we still need to make a motion on this, though.
Yep, so then I would just read it again, as ordinance 21, 2020, amending chapter 70-183 of the city of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to no parking 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on school days in the north side of the 1900 block of Jackson Street. Now I'd move for approval.
And I would second that.
Second by Boersma. All right, anything to add, Alder Person Jensen?
Nothing to add. Pretty self-explanatory.
All right, anybody else? Questions, comments?
I just want to say that this will be, avoid any confusion when this, when this is implemented. So that's why I, that's why I moved to to suspend and also to second the motion.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Is there signage already in place to clear this, or will it be added?
It will be added. It's my understanding that it'll be added. I don't believe there's anything there right now.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, thank you. So we'll go back to item number seven, which is the Aldermanic District One Appointment, and at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our clerk, Holly, and then if Fraternal Dregney has anything that he would like to interject, feel free to do so.
All right, so in the package, there are two applications for the District One Alder. I believe first, we have Rachel Venegas, and then second, we have Joyce Tikolsky. So how this is going to work is that I will read the questions. We'll alternate who goes first on each question, and each candidate will have an opportunity to respond. In the packet, there is a memo from Attorney Dregney, so tonight, we'll be making a motion to appoint someone to fill that vacancy, and then we will later on order the special election to fill the remainder of that term for two years. And I believe in that memo, there's actually a motion that is drafted. So once we get to the point where we're going to actually appoint someone, the language is in the packet to make it easy on everyone. So I guess we can go ahead and get started with the interview process if everyone is ready.
Holly, for a point of order?
Yes.
Just a question, because the notice to, for the special election is not, it's not noticed on the agenda, but it's in the packet, so does that, that still make it okay to do? I guess.
Yes, we're not actually ordering the special election tonight. We're going to order the special election later on in November. I can't remember the exact date, but there's a certain timeline laid out in the statutes that says when we can order a special election, so that will come later in November. But just so everyone has the understanding tonight, that we will appoint someone, and then with later on, order the special election. So this person will be serving a term from now until April, when the special election will occur.
This is Matt. I just want to weigh in briefly. So the procedure that Holly laid out is, in fact, the correct procedure if, in fact, the council wants to appoint someone to serve only until such time as a special election can be held next April. As the memo in the packet indicates, there are other options available to the council, but when this item was discussed at an earlier meeting, at least at that time, the direction that the council appeared to want to take was to make this appointment only until such time as a special election could be held. And so if that is still the direction the council wishes to take, then I recommend you use the language in the motion at the end of the memo.
All right. And I will also point out that we normally do swear the alder in during this meeting, whoever's appointed, but we can't do that virtually, so who is ever appointed tonight will, I'll touch base with you, and we can do the, sign the oath of office later this week. All right, so we'll start with Rachel. I have her application pulled up here for question number. Discuss your occupation, training, and education. What characteristics, qualifications, and experiences do you have that support your candidacy and potential for contribution as an alder person?
Thank you.
You're muted.
We can't hear you, Rachel.
Would help if I took it off mute. Thank you, Holly, and thank you, whoever said that. I work as a software project manager in Madison at DXC Technology. I have worked as a project manager for eight years after beginning my business career in customer service. I am experienced in understanding complex issues and various viewpoints. I have developed strong leadership skills, and I'm skilled in resolving issues. I am calm and collected under pressure. I am skilled in gathering information before making a decision about an issue. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration and Spanish from UW O'Clare. I have studied abroad in Chile and traveled extensively nationally and internationally. I've seen parts of the world and follow local, national, and international current events. I am conscious of people's situations outside of just the way I live, and have many friends from many parts of the world. I appreciate diversity while practicing leadership every day in my job and in my life. I am passionate, I am passionate about making the world a better place. I recently started a small business and frequently patronized the many excellent small business owners. I recently started a small business and frequently patronized the many excellent small business owners we have in Stoughton. Our local economy is very important to me. I love watching it flourish and I'm passionate about the impact that city council can have on our local Stoughton economy and our citizens' quality of life. Service to others is a pillar of a good life. I have volunteered locally with various groups over the years, including AFS Intercultural Programs and Three Gates Riding Program. In my daily life, I look for ways to serve others and act as a good example of how to treat myself and others. I care about making Stoughton a better place to live for everyone. I am passionate about the great town we have and want to contribute to its legacy. Having grown up in Stoughton, then living in various places before returning, I am familiar with Stoughton and can bring different viewpoints from my experiences. I care deeply about the issues that are relevant today. What we do affects, what we do today affects our tomorrow. It would be an honor to serve and represent my community as an alderperson.
Thank you, Rachel. The same question will go to Joyce. Please discuss your occupation, training, and education. What characteristics, qualifications, and experiences do you have that support your candidacy and contribution as an alderperson?
Thank you, Holly. My occupation was very long, my career was very long, and so sometimes people's eyes glaze over if I actually start through the whole thing. So I have a few highlights, and now I am primarily a volunteer, and I develop ways to convert traditional processes to digital ones. And by that, I mean for several organizations, I've set them up for email, email, web, Facebook, Twitter, Snapchat, whatever they would like, and hub account for public relations, and I support those. And, and I coach others in supporting those. I build, besides the social media systems, I develop support and training, and I donate those services mainly at the Senior Center. I teach smartphones, computer skills, and basic electronics. I just taught yesterday for girl-to-girl some basic circuitry, and that was, that went over very well, so that's very rewarding to me. And then I write just tutorials and prepare progress reports, and I keep track of my time for the Senior Center for Cindy. Soon after we moved to Stoughton, I worked at the Stoughton Courier-Hub, Wisconsin Counties Association, and then Nicolay Audio Diagnostics and Huricon Corporation, which really don't exist anymore. It's certainly not in that form, but it was at the time a technology paradise on the west side of Madison. And it was also the time we introduced twenty-four-hour workdays. Some of you might be familiar with that. And it was just probably the most exciting part of, of what I did. When the internet reached Madison, which was nineteen ninety-five, I recognized the coding language because I had already examined it on a computer at the University of Illinois, and I knew that I could build websites pretty rapidly, and not very many people were doing it. So I, I thought that was a tremendous opportunity for me, and I also just completely enjoyed doing it. It was the most creative thing I'd done probably in my lifetime. And so I built a couple commercial websites, another one for my brother-in-law, all free, to get my portfolio together. And then the city council at the time formed a Stoughton Communications Commission and appointed me to collaborate with Rodney Shield, which was a lot of fun. And I wrote the code for the first website, and that's something I'm still pretty proud about. At Noran Instruments, I built websites, managed technical documentation, and managed marketing and promotion for medical and technical products in international markets. That was also a pretty exciting time because there were, it turned out that when I had to print things for the sales crew, I discovered that QuickTrip had offices in all of our sales offices in Korea, Germany, you know, I guess the Netherlands, and pretty much all of our offices. And so I was able to PDF format files, and I didn't get to actually distribute them because I left to take another job. But that was a great time to see technology move forward in that way. I specialize in technology products that can be used by people with vision, hearing, cognitive, and motor disabilities. At UW Madison, I collaborated for a long time with other webmasters at the College of Business, or School of Business and the College of Medicine, and, and other webmasters, plus McBurney Disability Resource Center, to make sure that we had some type of, of testing and accountability for website use in place. The Illinois, for a long time, has had a law on the books that their educational websites in higher education have to be, they have to be accessible by everyone. We don't have that here in Wisconsin yet. My training required continual training and communication skills for technology and business topics. I worked on hardware and software testing and human-computer action, interaction. Diversity training, I have mentioned here, was required for every new employee at Universal Silencer. Silencer, pretty much when you walked in the door, you received a training in diversity issues. If you were at management level, you spent a day in training. And the most invaluable piece of information I had was how to handle difficult situations. That training was probably only five minutes of the course. If anyone is interested in, in that, I'd be glad to share that anytime. I, I've had to use it once or twice, and I, that really helped me out. It's a way of taking care of those kind of uncomfortable situations in the moment. I have a master of science degree from Drexel University, Department of Computing and Informatics. And at UW Madison College of Engineering, I developed new processes for testing websites. And I wrote one of those up and presented it at the University of Illinois. I enjoy growing through challenges. I am self-motivating, and I enjoy in-depth research about issues, talking with neighbors, encouraging them to run for office, and building plans to support change. I learned from a Stoughton mentor to, really a little late in my life, to choose collaboration over isolated decision-making. Sometimes in, in, you know, the technical world, you, you're so under the gun, you, you just want to race and get to the goal as rapidly as you can. In my life now, I, I've been able to adjust that and understand that the people that are affected need a voice all the time. I enjoy volunteering at the Stoughton Area Senior Center because the staff and volunteers there support each other so well. I have a wide range of interests, I rely on the values of my father, integrity, courtesy, and he said education, but he really meant independent learning. He didn't really have an opportunity for education in his time. I also realized I left my mom out of that, and she taught me almost every day, or reminded me almost every day, that if you want to eat the bread, you have to help make it, and that really affected my life too. So my qualifications are that national, state, county, and local developments have inspired me since, really, I suppose about March or April, when I had a talk with a neighbor about sitting in on the council and committee deliberations, so I could share my ideas. My volunteer activity keeps me in contact with my fellow Stoughtonites, which I thoroughly enjoy. My experiences have been recently pursuing alternatives for the special assessment payments, and I followed the work of the Finance Committee, and they did a terrific job. And I contacted people, I, I put together a little plan for myself, really as a reference, I shared it with the committee also. And I spoke with the Wisconsin Municipalities, League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and the Wisconsin City County Management Association, and Brett Schumacher was supportive, and also Jase, Jaiman was, he gave me time, I'm pretty sure he didn't have, so I'm very grateful for that. I wrote this plan and then a proposal, and continue, and I'm continuing now related research on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So question two will go the opposite order now, so Rachel doesn't have to go first every time. So question to Joyce, in your opinion, what are the most important current issues for the city of Stoughton? Please discuss one of these issues in detail and describe how you would lead a committee to a solution.
I'm really centered right now on the pandemic, I'm collecting as much as I, information as I can about it. The city, I'm really proud that the city adapted so quickly to meet challenges from the pandemic. On the city's website for pandemic information, the one thing I would be good to talk about is another resource, as people wonder how many cases there and how many deaths, that information in a general way is, is pretty easily accessible, and it might be good to put a link there to that more official information. And there is a map that would be a great length, and it, it tracks the number of cases and deaths in three census tracts in the Stoughton area. I'm not sure if that's the best detail, I think some people would need to weigh in on what that should be. We should continue adapting to new technology, and, and I guess we always should, but now it's accelerated because of the pandemic. New ideas might emerge from the work that's already been achieved by the city council and city staff. The outdoor dining went really rapidly, at least it appeared like that to me. Virtual meetings happened almost, it seemed like, right away. And we have a ballot drop box, which is tremendous, and there are other wonderful projects that have been completed. And I, I think now, probably you know it maybe even better than I do, that digitization of processes is accelerating. There may be some good that comes out of that. Business has done very well at innovating, I believe. And the only thing that might be a downside is debt. But there's a lot, there have been a lot of technological efficiencies that have come out of the pandemic. So I agree with council members who believe we can think our way out of the pandemic. That was demonstrated at a recent meeting about the Opera House. To respond to challenges for the Opera House, Stoughton might plan to take advantage of the fact that everybody loves Wisconsin in the summer, even with face masks and social distancing. Besides the free gazebo music events, if famous artists could perform in ticketed concerts outdoors here as a kind of big top shiitakewa, I hope you've had a chance to go up there north to visit that. And that outdoor concession that, that might bring in revenue, if, in the big top, they open that several hours in advance of a show, and people love that, and they spend quite a bit on meals before the show. Somehow, I, I wonder if that might be a good thing to look at, too. Promoting downtown offices for people who work at home now could boost activity and little vibrancy for downtown. I love downtown very much, too. Most co-working facilities offer a way for people to have a desk or an office. Again, it would have to be careful to be safe during the pandemic, pandemic, but there are cost savings and convenience. And also people gather together in those facilities for feedback on their work, instead of being at home and, and sort of wanting to bounce ideas off of someone, that provides a setting for that, too. So I've wanted myself to rent a co-working desk for a long time, so co-working services would be ideal, I think, on the second story of downtown. Madison had one, and I, it may have had one on the way in twenty fifteen. Now there are twenty-one of those facilities, and it's just, it would be good to investigate the market there. Specialized temporary businesses can open quickly and operate for a short time as pop-ups, as another possibility to, to fill in some downtown. There may be some small businesses that would be willing to, to do something like that. So in order to get some of these things done, I would consult the city departments and gather as much relevant research as possible, and write a comprehensive draft plan for a committee to review and discuss. I would coordinate additional legal and expert opinion before finalizing a plan so that it could be moved forward to the council. And of course, I, I really should have put something more in here about citizen input, and I guess I'm going to have to think about that a little bit. The second one is the reduction of carbon emissions. I support frequent public updates about goals, methods, and timelines for Stoughton to reduce carbon footprint, and I know that people are working hard toward that, and so I'm, I'm looking forward to tracking that. The next one really is community diversity training of some type. My, my experience at Universal Silencer led me to that five-minute solution, and it was so helpful in my life in many instances, that I, I think, and I've been trying to suggest to people to contact Commons, contact Universal Silencer. They haven't so far succeeded to find out some leads on diversity training, but I may continue that myself a little bit, too. And I hope that we have some continuing projects on racial injustice and related issues. We've done very well so far, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel, in your opinion, what are the most important current issues for the city of Stoughton? Please discuss one of these issues in detail and describe how you would lead a committee to a solution. You're muted.
I was so excited about not being muted, and then I went ahead and forgot about it. So I have chosen my top four, and then I'll expand on one of those. In my opinion, the most important current issues for the city of Stoughton are creating an inclusive community, two, managing our city in a way that improves the well-being of the people who live here; three, reducing our negative impact on the environment; four, finding creative and effective ways to do all of this within budget. And I'll expand on the reducing our negative impact on the environment. I am passionate about reducing our negative impact on the environment. It's an issue that is important to many people. I follow the green movement closely and take small steps at home to reduce my own impact. I would lead a committee to implement small changes throughout the city so that we can become more educated and conscious of our impacts on the environment. I would search creative ways to implement green solutions. I would start small with just one solar panel or one compost bin while educating the public and getting buy-in from community members. By starting small, we can see what works well within the community and grow those solutions without investing too much upfront. Many times, green solutions are less costly than typical solutions. This would offer better quality of life for our citizens and help them build connections to the community of Stoughton. There are many small groups of nature lovers and green thinkers who want to showcase their work or pitch in to build a greener community. When we work together on small solutions, we can find what works well for the city and then build on those solutions. While some environmental issues, climate change, for example, may not be specific to Stoughton, communities appreciate seeing their city's impact on the environment reduced. The committee, including myself, would propose ideas, gather information, and discuss their feasibility. I would come up with a set of criteria that we could grade the solutions on, such as cost, impact, et cetera, helping us to decide on which to implement first. I would also have the committee talk with local businesses and see what solutions have already been implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce, same question to you. Or I'm sorry, new question, or no, we're back to Rachel. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Rachel, question three. If there was an issue on the table you agreed with, but your constituents disagree with, disagreed with, how would you vote and why?
After doing a survey- After doing a survey of my constituents, I would not vote in opposition to them. The only exception to this would be on an issue that is ethical and nature, for example, racism. I would not vote against my key beliefs in equality or other ethical, ethical topics. If I felt a policy was racist or wrong in any other ethical way, I would not vote for it. Thank you.
And Joyce, if there was an issue on the table that you agreed with, but your constituents disagreed with, disagreed with, how would you vote and why?
I, I wrote in the answers on, in my document that I expect to vote with my constituents on most issues. Because an alder serves as a representative advocate and voice, it is important to be certain when I vote that I have explained the issues to district citizens well and I have collected adequate data about their wishes. When other factors are not compelling or clear, elected officials are sometimes called upon to vote their conscience. I might be faced with a moral obligation to vote my conscience in order to follow a law or make an ethical choice to support the public good. And I just wanted to add to that briefly, that one thing I've discovered from watching the council members is that there's a, seem, you know, there's a spectrum of, of priorities. Some of us go instantly to how does some issue affect a private interest? Some of us go to the other end of the spectrum and think instantly about the public good. And there, there was, I would, that was troubling me for a time and I realized there, there are two sides of the same coin that all of us have to think about the private interest impact and, and the public good. It's just that in, in some instances, we go to one of those ends of the spectrum or the other. And we don't need necessarily to have division or either or. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Question four, Joyce. Council meetings are the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. And there are two standing committees will be assigned to in addition to other meetings, correspondence, and information that will require your attention. Do you anticipate a problem in attending evening meetings or fulfilling other time commitments of an alder person?
I do have adequate time and a flexible schedule. I fill my days and I would make adjustments to serve. As a volunteer now, I focus on fulfilling commitments. This simple practice supports trust and teamwork and is an important model for leadership roles. Thank you.
And Rachel, the council meetings are the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month and there are two standing committees you will be assigned to in addition to other meetings, correspondence, and information that will require your attention. Do you anticipate a problem in attending evening meetings or fulfilling other time commitments of an alder?
I do not anticipate any problems with attending evening meetings or fulfilling other time commitments of an alder person. I'm very excited and committed to being an alder person and will make it my commitment and priority to attend all meetings. And I promise I know how to use mute because I do this all day.
We know.
That was the end of the questionnaire and I think we Matt, do you want to?
Yeah, I can weigh in. Sure, I can weigh in here. So the council really gets to decide what process it would like to use to, to complete the work here of selecting someone to fill this vacancy. Obviously, because of the format that we're using for this meeting, you know, some options that might work in person would not, would not work over Zoom. The most straightforward approach, in my view, would be for Mayor Swadley to first ask for nominations. Give Alders an opportunity to nominate a candidate, a person to serve. And then once the nominations are in, the next step would be to vote on those nominations. If only one candidate is nominated, then the vote would be on that candidate. If two candidates are nominated, then I would suggest a roll call vote where each alder would vote for the candidate of, of that alder's choice. I think that would be the, the simplest way to proceed and that way is pretty consistent with typical practice for filling a vacancy like this.
Thank you, Matt. Does that sound reasonable approach to Alders?
It, it sounds reasonable. I just don't remember us ever having to nominate one candidate versus another. We just by them submitting their application, I thought that they basically were nominated and we just voted.
Well, that, that would also be an option. The council could choose to say we're not going to take nominations. We're going to assume that both candidate, both of these individuals are nominee, are nominees and vote on both of them. That, again, it's up to the council to decide exactly how you want to do this.
I'd be in favor of just voting.
I like the idea of both being nominees. I think they are both awesome choices. This is a difficult decision. I would like to nominate both if we need to nominate anyone.
I agree with that also.
I agree. This is really, really, really a difficult decision and I think the city would be served well by either one of these women. So it's really, it's a tough decision.
It is a very tough decision. I want, before we start voting, I want to thank both of you guys for applying and coming out tonight and working with new virtual reality and being interviewed. You did, both did a great job and both are very impressive women and will be well-served with whoever wins. So thank you both.
Thanks, Regina.
You're welcome.
We'd be lucky to have either one of them.
And just add that my first run-up public office, I was interviewed by the school board. Not get selected the first time, but I tried again. And I was selected and I served seven years on the school board, which led me to the city council, ultimately became mayor. So I would hope that whoever's not selected will, will continue to, you know, work toward being a council member.
I thought you were going to say work towards being a mayor.
Do that too.
I think I'm the only one that has that track right now. I'm the only other one with, with seven years on school board and now on council. But I don't plan to run for the mayor.
You say that now, Brett.
And I agree, I agree that in my district, we have two excellent choices. So I'm glad we have two choices. It makes it difficult for votes, but it's better, better to have great choices.
If we could, Mayor, I think if we just do a roll call vote.
I, I have one more thing to say quickly. This is Jean Legaki and I love having this problem. This is a fantastic problem to have. We're working hard at building up diversity and, and may I just say, possibly in light of what's really going on in larger parts of our world, I encourage you both to run when we announce this. We're just council people. We have to choose one of you. And I really would encourage you both to run. You fit some directions that least mine. I hope that council continues to grow and so this is exciting. Thank you so much. Please run for any of the positions that are open.
Thank you, Jean.
Okay, I think what we'll do that is Holly, would you be prepared to take the roll call then?
I am. So just so I understand, I'm going to be taking a roll call. Each alder will say their choice and then afterwards will make a motion to appoint that person to serve until the, we can order a special election, correct, Matt?
Actually, no, I think once the vote has completed, whichever candidate gets the majority of votes, once the, once the result of the vote is announced, whichever candidate has the majority of votes would then be appointed. There would not be a need to take a second vote to appoint.
So we can ignore your memo, the, the language written at the bottom?
Oh, that's a good point. Oh, thank you, Holly, for saving me. Well, let's see. So let me think about this for a minute.
That was a lot easier when we just did a paper ballot, wasn't it?
Time's up, man.
I, I would, I would like to, I would like to suggest that the not, that the, that the, that the following motion be made that the council nominates. Rachel, what's your last name? Only have a V.
Like, it's Venegas.
Okay, the council nominates Rachel and Joyce pursuant to WISSTAT 17.23 sub one to fill the vacant position of alderperson for District One. And the nominee who is selected shall serve as an alderperson for District One until a special election to be ordered by the common council under WISSTAT Section 8.50 is held and a successor is elected and qualified. So I'm going to recommend that that be the motion.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so I heard the motion from Boersma and seconded by Johnson. Any discussion or clarification from anyone needed on that motion?
Did Holly get all that?
I did, I think so. So instead of doing the city of Stoughton hereby appoints, we're going to do hereby nominates and then both candidates' names. And then we will do a roll call vote.
Yes.
To figure out who we are appointing.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So on to the roll call. Boersma.
Yeah, I would vote for Joyce.
Caravelo.
I also vote for Joyce. Tough decision.
I vote for Rachel.
Kylie.
Sorry, Joyce Tocolsky.
Rachel.
I would like Joyce, please.
Okay. Jensen.
Rachel.
Legaki.
Difficultly stating Joyce Tocolsky.
Masi.
Rachel.
Reeves.
Joyce.
Schumacher.
It's certainly a difficult choice, but Joyce Tocolsky, please.
All right, give me a second here.
Greg, you've got music in the background.
That's me. That's my son downstairs.
Okay, so the total that I have, there were seven votes for Joyce Tocolsky and four votes for Rachel Venegas. Or I'm sorry, I just said that wrong.
Yes.
Okay, so with that, Joyce to
Tocolsky.
Been appointed to the council.
Oh, thank you all so much. And Rachel, I'll be talking to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so then Holly, you're going to make contact with Joyce. What are you thinking tomorrow to make arrangements to be sworn in?
Yes, Joyce, I will send you, I'll either give you a call in the morning or send you an email with some information about getting sworn in and I'll also send you the council rules and some other information.
Oh, great. Thank you very much.
All right. It's, once again, thanks to both of you. I think that's all we had on the agenda tonight.
I'll move to adjourn.
I can.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
None opposed? Yes, I'm ignoring you. Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good night.
Rachel, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Night, all.
Good night, all.